We'll open up our February third work session. If you would please silence or turn off your cell phones at this time. And please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Denise, at this time, would you go over the deletions and corrections to the agenda?
Sure. We have one deletion, Fair Board Member Recommendation, and two additions, STF RFQ Revised, and Sagegrass Rulemaking Committee Reprint.
And there's one more deletion. You probably didn't get the Road Department Room Purchase.
No? Are we deleting that?
Yeah.
Yeah. You weren't in the office quite yet when I talked to Rick, and then he got sidetracked on other things. We're going to delete that one also. Any other corrections or additions? Okay, it's nine oh two. We're going to open up the public hearing at this time for the Revised Fee Methodology, Building Department. And officially, the hearing is open. And I'll ask Greg, Jennifer, do a little overview of what the hearing process is and what this will mean as far as the fee schedule.
Do you want us to go there and see it here?
Sure, yes, come right on up.
Okay. Okay.
Are you bringing another chair over?
That's all right.
Yes, all right. You'd be closer behind me.
Morning, Greg.
Morning.
Morning.
Hello?
Okay, we have in front of us a copy of the legal notice and Exhibit A and other things. This will be different in the way that the Building Department, this will be new fees and fees that we didn't have before. And the purpose of this hearing is to put public comment on this.
Greg Senior, Building Official, Lake County. Yes, this is to adopt fees that Lake County did not have associated with the Building Department. In joining the state e-permitting system, we're required to have the same fee methodology as the other jurisdictions participating in that program. So the fees that we're proposing to add would be deferred submittal, phased submittals, demolition permit, investigative, investigation fee, reinspection fee, and parks and camps. And we would also, as a county, be required to adopt the International Code Council Evaluation Chart every people.
Okay. Did you mention demolition, demolition permit also?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And just for my information, before I take the public testimony, reading on the fee schedule, what, the very first, BBD, what is that acronym?
You mean the Evaluation Table for my ICC? Okay. Top, first one. Right here.
Yeah, the top. Oh. Oh, it's building evaluation, something.
Okay. I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah.
And actually, this one actually is, is in our ordinance. We've always had it in our ordinance that we adopt the ICC every April. We just haven't been doing that.
And some of these fees, we actually can't cover them in a building permit fees anyway, just kind of teasing them out.
Yes. Like a deferred submittal fee, we, we didn't really have the deferred submittal portion previously. But if they wanted to defer parts of, and this primarily is related to commercial projects, if they wanted to defer some parts of their written submittal, it ended up they would have to, in effect, get another permit for that portion. So this new methodology will actually save the people money in doing it in this manner.
So essentially, if I'm building a commercial and I get a permit for part of it during the phase, I get a permit to pay X amount, and then when I decide to finish, I get another permit for X amount. This actually just tees that apart and actually be a reduced amount.
Yes. But an example of a deferred submittal, let's say you have a school that's going to be built, and they submit everything as a package, except they don't have the fire sprinkler and alarm system completed yet. So that would be a portion that they would defer until they, you know, they just don't have everything quite figured out about that yet. So that's an example of a deferred submittal. So it's, they pay a little fee plus a percentage of total permit fee for the deferred part, which would end up cheaper than a fully permitted product, yes. A phased, phased permit, that was, let's say you go back to that, that same school project. If they wanted to start before they had everything ready, we could issue them a phased portion for foundation where they could start the project and do the rest in phases.
Well, it's under our standard. We're given one permit and then the same scenario.
Right.
They keep coming back paying plan review and 12% surcharge again each time.
I can go down the line here and explain these different fees if you like.
It'd be good, buddy.
Sometimes the investigation fee, previously, under the state's code, if someone built a, a structure that required a permit and they didn't have a permit, the rule said that the penalty was double the permit fee. That law has been changed, so now we're only allowed to charge them an investigation fee of the actual time it takes to get them to comply.
That's covering costs.
Right. Typically, it's, it's figured on the hour, like your hourly wage is already set forth in the fee schedule. So it, most jobs, it will save them money that way. If it was, you know, a significant sized building, the permit fee could have been $1,000, so the fine could have been $1,000 also. Investigation is probably two or three hours.
That's two or three hours, not two or three dollars.
Hours, yes.
My hearing is better here than out there.
As far as the reinspection fee, we're proposing to raise that from, it was $45 for each hour of reinspection. All of your other fees within your fee schedule are $60 per hour. So it only made sense to make that one the same. And just for the record, since Clamath County's been coming over here and doing inspections, we haven't charged anyone a reinspection fee yet, so.
You're bringing the same thing's fault?
Yes. Right. The demolition fees, that's something that the state requires us to have also. What it does for the jurisdiction is, first of all, it, they get it through planning first, and they can take this, whatever they're going to demo, off of the tax roll that will go through the accessories department. And as a building department, typically, we would do two inspections for demolition. We'd do a pre-demol, where we would go to the site. If there were utilities hooked to the building, we would ensure that they've been safely disconnected, and then they're located, demo the building. A final demo, where we'd go back and make sure that everything is cleaned up and all the way. So you have a safety barrier.
Another scenario, you mentioned the electrical. Could be propane also. What about asbestos? Is that something you have to deal with considering?
I'm not sure how they kind of, like county handles asbestos over there. They can get a form for asbestos removal. There's a process they can do. They can take care of it themselves, bag it, take it to a landfill. So it's kind of left up to the, the owners to, to deal with the asbestos. Parks and camps, that's never been in your fee schedule here. Providing there was a time where someone is going to put in a manufactured home park or a parking park that would need to be in your fee schedule, so we're just adding that. And then the valuation table again, we'll talk about that. Other questions I can answer?
No, I, I believe, a particular overview, I guess, well, maybe. One question is, is there an automatic inflation factor that goes onto the fees once we go into this yearly? Or is that up to the Board of Commissioners each year, whether we raise fees or not?
No, this has nothing to do with, with the fees set forth. They're going to stay unless we formally adopt an increase of some kind.
Okay. So like the $60 an hour, you know, that, that'll stay there unless we, because that's one thing that happens a lot of times, is there's no inflation factor built into things. And then you end up 10 years back, and then it's hard to catch up with inflation.
Your fees here have been stagnant for many years.
Some of that's been somewhat intentional, that we try to attract people to come here and build it.
Right. Just as an example, like your minimum fee per hour is $60, Clamath County is $86. And Clamath County's, you know, not way above everybody else in our same like-size jurisdiction. So Lake is probably behind, but none of this has anything to say about the, the standard fees you have are not meant to change unless we formally make an adoption and change those. The only thing that's going to change is the valuation table from ICC. And they go up sometimes, sometimes they go down. Typically, when the economy is growing, they're going to increase some. We had a fairly large developer in Clamath County that bought out two subdivisions over there. So they were a little concerned about what this was going to do to their building permit cost. And I ran all the numbers for them on the old cost to the new cost. On a 2,000 square foot home, it was going to increase the building permit $17. So it's not a significant thing. This, this chart gives us a value, and that value is what we figure the permit fees on.
Does the Board give us overview? Yeah. Would take any public testimony on what the hearing is about, the building revised fees, Exhibit A. Is there any public testimony? State names for the record, please, sir.
Hey, Dustin Gustavson. And I'm actually here to talk about something else, but I'll keep this just right to this specific topic. As far as the Building Department fees, I just urge the Board of Commissioners to, we are Clamath County, we aren't Deschutes County, we are Lake County. And we need to make sure that our fees are promoting, I guess, growth and not discouraging it. And we'll discuss some of this stuff later. But, you know, I think it's, it's just important that we are, the government isn't in the way, $17 difference. And it's probably not significant except for the person that is paying that $17. As a government, $17 isn't much to us. Individuals writing the check, it is, it is. And we've got businesses going out of business, the economy is not in a great state, even though our elected officials are saying it on the news that it is. Just caution that we consider what the impacts could be now and into the future with the fees.
Any other testimony? With this particular hearing, I'm going to go ahead and close it at 15 minutes after nine, for a decision. Hearing is closed. Discussion between the Board of Commissioners, was there anything throughout the hearing process that you would, that you would like to change or do anything different than what it was before?
No, I've chatted with both. I started to say Stefan. Right, extensively on this. Actually, it's overall more of a reflection on some of our fees. As far as you mentioned earlier, we've intentionally kept most of our, one basic thing I've used, love it. We're part of one of the lowest counties in the state of Oregon.
I've been here almost nine years and they've not raised ever.
That's, that is.
And I don't even.
As you mentioned, that's to get encouraged. As opposed to discouraged.
And so as we're going with this e-permitting and coming up to the 21st century, 22nd century, whatever it were, this should, a lot of this should make it much easier for our contractors and our homeowners and everything to be able to get through the process, know what the costs are, and see it right there. They can do it on their computers and things like that. So one question is, to the Building Department, as we're going here, do we need to be thinking with our IT and get a computer station in that office? The question.
It's all, it's a web-based program. The state sends us a computer, actually, we can put in our office if those contractors would like to use that. I have visited with the library about putting it there, and, and they don't, they don't particularly want it there. They said they don't have room. They already have eight public computers there already. She said, once we go live, I can bring her, like she explaining all the steps. If a contractor wants to come in there and use any of their computers, and explain everything that she can hand to them and say, this is the step you need to do. But as we go live, I, as I learn the program, I will probably put that computer up in our office, and I'll be able to help those contractors work through that.
You mentioned the library here. What about how other communities?
Yeah.
How's it go north?
North. We could put a computer somewhere, but I don't necessarily know that there's going to be anybody there helping them. Up north, the only contractors that I can think will use them is maybe Jake Lambert and the two electrical contractors up there. Dwayne Hand works a lot in Deschutes County and Harney County already. And I, I believe that he's probably already going from his computer at his office and doing that because he pulls permits with those counties a lot already. So, but there's going to be contractors that just aren't going to do it. They're going to bring me the paper form, and I'm going to put it on their form.
That's why we have you.
There will be a little transition.
Yeah, it'll be. And that's why I want to make sure I get well-knowledge of the program, then I can help, help them.
Any other questions, Greg or Jennifer, who would entertain the motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the Revised Fee Methodology, schedule as presented. OAR, OAR 918 dash zero five zero.
Did you second it, sir?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt Revised Fee Methodology consistent with OAR 918 half zero five zero. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Please, Stephen, Greg, and Jennifer, what Dustin called this morning and wanted to have some discussion on some of our fees. And as the chair, I told Denise to tell him to go ahead and come in. So I want to keep it in pretty narrow parameter and give you a little bit of public time to talk while we're all together.
Okay. Thank you. As you know, I wear many different hats. Today, I'm wearing the hat of a small business owner, a country home floor. We are wanting to go down the process of changing our sign that was on the side of the building, on the subway parking lot, side of the, of the concrete block wall. And so what we're looking at doing is purchasing a, a aluminum sign. It's four feet round, three millimeters, eight inch thick aluminum sign that has graphics on it. Found a, a local company in Clamath Falls that makes it, and the sign is going to cost us basically $500 to have it. It's going to weigh less than 20 pounds. And I went, thought, you know, heck, we'll try to do this the right way. Went to the city, went through their application process, cost me $25 to get their approval for our sign. And they approved it as long as I came to the county and got the approval here from the Building Department. And come to find out, I need, I'm being told that I need a building permit to hang a four-foot round sign on the side of the building. The way the fee structure is set up in this county, you have a minimum fee structure for everything from $5,000 below in valuation. That fee, I believe, for the building permit, I've got the numbers slightly off, probably is $65 for the building permit. And then there's a 12% cost on top of that for the state. And then there was a 40% cost on top of that for a plan review. And.
60%, I believe.
About 60, okay. So anyways, works out to about $116. So all told, between the city's $25 and the county's $116, I'm looking at $141 on top of a $500 sign, which is about 28% of the cost of the sign, just to get the permitting process done. You know, I understand, and, and looking at the, the structural specialty code, says the purpose of this code is provided, noted in these sections, "To establish the minimum requirements to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare through structural strength, means of egress, facilities, stability, sanitation, adequate light and ventilation, energy conservation, safety to life and property from fire and other hazards attributed to the built environment, and to provide safety to firefighters and emergency responders during emergency operations." I'm having a hard time seeing where a sign, four-foot round diameter, aluminum, less than 20 pounds, attached to the side of a wall is fitting into the, the purpose of this code. And this is the code that specifies whether a permit is needed or not needed. It also specifies that for some, some activities that aren't, well, let me see, there's an exemption. "For submittal documents, the building official may waive the submission of plans, calculations, construction inspection requirements, and other data and related plan review fee if it is found that the nature of the work applied for is such that reviewing of plans is not necessary to obtain compliance with this code." And then, you know, that's the, the plan review and also the fee. I guess part of it is, is there's the ability to do the right thing. And I think we all would think that we have, hanging a sign of that nature is probably a fairly easy task. It's not that I'm going to hang it up there with bubble gum on the side of the wall. We're actually going to put screws in, in it to secure it. And it's interesting, as I sit here, I look behind you, and I wonder if a permit was needed for that sign, which is about the same size and dimensions of what I'm looking to hang up. You know, not that the wind's going to take that down unless the window's open, maybe. But, you know, earthquake or something could definitely have a.
Well, Dustin, you have to keep in mind the value of the people that it could hit.
Well.
The public's it.
Yeah, we protect the public.
I don't know if external signs and internal signs, if it's a safe permit that would be necessary, but I, I get your point.
I refer to our building inspector as that. I, I did not find, I did not find signs referenced in here. It says that I can hang an awning up, window awning that protrudes no more than 4, 54 inches out from the side without a permit. And I'm thinking, that's overhead, the wind can catch it, it could fall on somebody. Probably have a greater impact to their, their life or safety than a sign. And might, the sign that we're looking at, the top of the wall is only eight and a half feet. So we were looking at hanging a sign from three and a half feet up to seven and a half feet off the ground. There's a brick flower bed that sticks out about three feet right there. It's not an accessible area where people are going to be walking. I don't mind getting a permit, but I guess it's the fee structure and setting that minimum for something in this case takes it from a reasonable fee up to, you know, $116 for that permit. When, in fact, I don't, I don't want to speak for Greg, but I would think that he would probably be able to stop near our store as he's walking the subway, walk up to the sign, give it a little jiggle. That would be about the inspection. So I'm not sure what, what we're really paying for in that process.
Well, let's, let's let Greg speak a little bit to, this is the first time I've dealt with anything hanging signs on buildings.
Okay.
And the first time I've come up with any, any discussion. And I wouldn't allow Dustin to come on to our opinion today. And I never talked to you before, so you're sort of blindsided, so I apologize.
I don't have a code book with me, but in the section that.
So you want to get one?
Permits. I don't think I mean the exact number that's in there. It refers to any changes, repairs, alterations, da-da-da, about to a building requires a permit. And then it goes on to exemptions from the Department. And there are 13 or 14. And as he stated, awnings, for whatever reason, are one of the exemptions. Signs are not exempt. So that says to our Building Department that signs require permits. I also have a supplemental sheet here. And it says, "The Oregon State Building Code regulates removal, demolition, and alteration of buildings, manufactured buildings, and other structures." And specifically, in quotations, "Signs shall be designed, constructed, and maintained in accordance with this code." So yes, signs are a permitted item. A wall sign, such as they're proposing to put up, has a square foot limitation. If it's under that square foot, a permit is not required. Their sign is slightly over that.
So is the sign behind these gentlemen, would that need a permit?
Well, in the exceptions, it lists things interior of buildings that do not require permits. Cabinets, file cabinets, desks, walkings, you know.
But it doesn't specifically mention signs.
Denise would call this art.
The point is, it doesn't specifically mention signs when it exempts interior structures, nor does it specifically mention signs when it has exemptions for exterior items. I think there's a, a room for interpretation in, in looking at the scope of a, and the purpose of the, of this, this code and the implementation of it. I, I think Greg has a lot of ability here that I'd like to see him utilize in this case in something like this.
Is it ability, or do you mean discretion?
Discretion, I guess. Ability to, to, to do as he, you know, as, as he has, you, you got it, okay. So he has a lot of discretion in this, and ability to waive the fee or the plan review. The other piece of this is just that minimum cap on, on the fee, the 1,000 to 5,000. Looking at your fee schedule, you know, I mean, you used to have a fee schedule that was incrementally had established. If you went back to that, in this case, it would have been a $23 fee to me for a permit versus 116. And then combined with the city, and we're looking at $48, and that's less than 10% of the cost of just the sign itself. I think that's more reasonable for doing the right thing. I've had conversations with Mr. Shaw and Ann Winters on this issue. You know, I think the, the other purpose of, to me, of the building codes is, I mean, it is to protect life and property. And there's two sides to that, enforcement and prevention. And prevention begins by people coming into this, this building and talking to Jennifer and at some point Greg, and starting that conversation. and starting that conversation. If the structure of the fee is such that it's a deterrent of people coming in and getting that permit, that prevention piece doesn't happen at all because nobody's coming in here. And I think, I think folks would probably agree that a lot of projects of minimal nature and value of five hundred dollars, thousand, couple thousand, very seldom are people coming into this building and getting the permits to begin with. And is that a function of they just don't know, or is it the fee that's deterring them from that idea?
One, one thing that individually, I'm probably speaking from the whole board, is we rely on the building official to make the right call. He has a lot, he or she has a lot of responsibility when it comes to it. When we talk signage in general, yours is pretty simple compared to what maybe the intent of the signage thing is, is one hanging off, sticking out, or thicker, or whatever. I don't know about discretion Greg has to waive the plan review or this or that, to keep the fees down. Dustin, I did look at where we have one to five thousand dollar fee, it's gonna be a hundred, or whatever it is. In this particular case, that seems like that's quite a bit. Because of your cost of your signs for a minimal put-up on the wall is, in my thinking, is probably pretty simple. I'm not a building official, I think a couple of walls screwing screws is sufficient, don't know. But our fees are what they are at this point, and you're at this point of going through the process. So I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that we can waive the fees or anything, but I would definitely think that Greg will use the best discretion he can.
Well, I'll ask a quick question. I know you talked to Jennifer, and we did talk last week. Have you talked to Greg, I mean, you're all here? Have you guys had a good conversation on this? And, 'cause we're, as, as Commissioner Winters said, we're not here to tell the building official what to do. That's why we have a building official, and we trust his judgment. I could echo the same thing about the size of the sign, what the intent is. I, you know, I, I don't have a lot of disagreement. The one thing we haven't mentioned, and I mentioned to you last week, because we had a similar situation that came up last week that had nothing to do with building, but there's a cost to doing business. And when you have these departments that are supposed to be self-sufficient, no matter what the permit request is, that they're there and available to go through all the processes, it, there is a cost to doing business. That's a, you know, that's, that's separate from whether or not, should this cost a hundred and sixteen dollars? But I, I would defer to, to Greg on that in his discretion. And, and it's not, Greg, it's not for being decided in here. I don't think this is the appropriate form.
I just wasn't allowed the discussion to...
We did speak on the phone, I believe it was last Friday. And I thought I explained to Dustin the requirement to get a permit. And he said, you know, he says it's a simple thing, you have the discretion to waive the permit, the plan review fee. I said, yes, that's true. He said, would you do that? And I said, no, I would not. And I said, well, why not? It's a simple thing. Well, I told him, if I did that, that would be saying to you, you can put the sign up however you like, bubble gum, whatever. I'm not wanting to do that because it's a public safety thing. It, had this sign cost forty-nine hundred dollars, you would've thought this hundred and sixteen was a bargain. It's just unfortunately caught up the whole end.
I'll interject that, two things. One is, this building official needs to assure that it's attached securely for safety. It's not unknown to have eight miles an hour wind and a twenty-pound four-foot diameter can go down the street if it's not attached. So that part, we need to assure that it's attached safely. Then the other part is the fee, and that's for the commissioners to, if so choose. Greg is just instituting what needs to be done, and then the, the fee is our part.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Greg and Jennifer, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't make you aware that we're gonna have a public...
That's all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, our next item, we'll walk you through here. Why don't we go ahead and do the, we'll jump around a little bit here, and get Darwin in for all of one time, so maybe we can get everything the other way. The STF agreement number two-nine-five-two-three.
Okay, please. This is for, the state legislature a few months ago approved additional funding for special transportation funds. What that means to Lake County is additional eleven thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars to our special transportation program. This amendment just says that, yeah, one two three.
And, I'll mean so, expanding that money?
We will be discussing that at our upcoming special transportation, on the twelfth. It may wait until next year. There may be carrier with dollars, because right now the working is done, and they have allotted themselves...
Is this state funds or federal funds?
These are state.
And Dana motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve STF number two, as stated.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept amendment number two, grant agreement number two-nine-five-two-three. Any further description? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Can I strike my minutes because I did get those to you guys? They're just on on me.
Any minutes are gone?
Sitting on my computer.
While we're on STF, you wanna go ahead and do the addition, Denise?
Sure. I learned yesterday from one of the dealers that I sent this RFQ out to that these vans, because of the way that they have to be equipped, cannot be all-wheel drive. They have to be front-wheel drive, which still serves our purpose. So I just had to change my RFQ and take all-wheel drive off. People go out and they'll get one additional day only because we are scheduled to meet on the twelfth, so...
Okay, but the RFQ hadn't went out yet?
It had gone out.
And had gone out?
Mm-hmm, that's how I found out, but the way that I sent it, it's incorrect.
Okay.
So...
So you need for us to officially approve the revised RFQ?
That would be correct.
I'll make that motion to revise it.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to revise the previous RFQ that was put out for transit vehicle price quote. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Darwin, you're here. We have you for two different things. Come on up.
Sure.
Well, we'll start off with the land sale buyback first, and then we, while we have you here, we might as well move right from that to the department update.
Yep, that sounds good, thank you. I think we signed the buyback policy of two thousand and eight, this part of your packet, which is currently our policy. Last September, when we had the fifteen percent sale of properties, have been on the, remaining properties have been on the over-the-counter available properties. At forty percent, they've been there for two, four years, and we're now available at fifteen percent. I talked to a couple of you prior to that sale occurring, and it'd been discussed that we would allow for people to send in a check that couldn't make it to the actual morning drawing, which would happen for multiple persons being interested in property, those properties. So we conducted a drawing and afterwards realized that we probably should've made an official policy change in the books on that. And so the draft that you have before you is kind of just a clamp of the policy, which includes that option, that people can, within two weeks of the drop in percentage of the real market value, submit the payment and the request for, for that, any property. And then there would need to be an individual request and payment, okay? So if there's two, they need to have separate checks for each, just so that if they are successful in one, we don't have to invest money.
I can't just say, I'd buy all the property and...
Yeah, yeah, they, they could do that, but they need to, yeah, have individual checks, so, I'll think. And so that's really just a clamp. And then the last line is, is up for, for the other discussion of a, a part of this piece, which is the buyback option, which the agenda summary has the ORS two-seventy-five-point-one-eight-zero, which is sale to the record owner or contract per, sort of property, the conditions. That, just to summarize, that Oregon statute is that the county may at any time sell back to the last known property owner at the time that it was foreclosed to the county. They can allow that person to buy back the property. You know, there's a six-year process in which these properties are being foreclosed, and I, I sent out an email to each of the counties to see which counties are doing this. Some are doing it, and some aren't. I'll give you a summary of, of a few of the counties that are doing it.
What question on that? Would they buy back for everything that they never paid for that six years?
Yes.
Or would they buy back for what we put it out at the land sale as?
So it's, it's prior to the land sale, it'd be, they would be buying, buying the property back before it went to auction at all interest and taxes due for the time that was, you know, while it was getting foreclosed on. And then also that coming year's taxes, what would've been incurred had they still owned the property. And then there can be also fees added to it. All liens and all that kind of stuff has to go right back on too. So, so in most, most cases, you know, on bare land, there's not gonna be any liens. It's just bare profit, there's no sewer water districts or anybody else that are probably gonna, you know, have filed a lien against the property. It, it's really just for the homes and stuff. So as I prepared this and sent it out last week to you guys, I did get a couple more responses from two other counties, Lane County and Coos County. Lane County has, again, the counties that, that did allow for a buyback policy had, had a few reasons why you'd allow this, and most of them had to do with a physical illness or military service gel time, or some other extreme hardship that was truly beyond the control of, of the, you know, the property owner. Lane County, their main reason that they gave was if there was an error or omission from, from the taxation office. And, and that one, I, it would be my opinion to, to not have a buyback policy, which, you know, it's kind of fifty-fifty from what I've seen to the counties so far, some do and some don't, but that we wouldn't, only under that circumstance. And that would be something you wouldn't actually have to have in the policy, but if we know when we screwed up, we could easily, you know, correct, correct the mistake, so. All of them had a timeline of less, no longer than a year out that the, a buyback had to happen as well.
You know, one time that I can remember, we had sort of a situation coming for us. It was the real property of the mobile home, one was foreclosed on, the other one wasn't. And we actually, the government board, we actually allowed the person to get caught up under taxes and keep their home.
That, that was the, you know, only other county that had an example, that was, was Lane County as well, which wasn't in your packet, but was just received, it was, if it was the residence of a property owner, that would be one of those situations which to, you know, consider. But I mean, again, it's still ask to prove that they, it was beyond their control, that they weren't just neglecting to pay their taxes and it was that important to look at all these notices that they're getting, hey, we're gonna foreclose on you kind of situation, so. Again, I, I think that, you know, it's kind of a loophole that, that's been created by statutes. For a lot of people, there's buyback option, which, I mean, six years is plenty of time for people to get their taxes paid. A lot of times, what's happening too is that, you know, we're, we're getting a lot of investors calling the county, you know, and asking for the list of people who are delinquent on their taxes and yet not, haven't yet been foreclosed on. And, and there's options there for people to even sell their properties ahead of time if they know they're just not gonna be able to pay their taxes.
So what you're recommending is, on the buyback, would be for case by case, under certain circumstances?
My, my actual recommendation is no buyback, no buyback at all. But that, but that if, if we're in the wrong, we're gonna correct that. And but that's something that we can have, not in the policy itself. That's something we're gonna do on a case by case if we've truly screwed up. But I don't want it to be publicized that we're, sure, if you're laying on your taxes, we'll give you one more chance at the end, so.
Well, Darwin, you and I visited about this at great length, and I agree with you. We represent all those taxing districts out there with our actions, and, and I think it is, after that many years, it's obvious when we've made a mistake, and there's been mistakes made in the past, and, and we allow for that. But to have it as part of a policy, I don't think is necessary.
There's a lot of time that goes into it, and, you know, just trying to figure out how to re, you know, recoup those costs. It just seems like a huge, you know, wasted everyone's time, you know, truly. So that, that's my recommendation. I, I hope you all had a chance to look into this policy and find that it's, you know...
Okay, I wanted, yeah, back to the land sale policy. Were you, were we gonna be allowing people to send in a check on that forty percent on that day? Do you keep track of the number two person, in case another person fails with finances or draws?
Yeah, that was suggested to us last, you suggested that, um, last September. We did do that. However, you know, everybody, but we did track the second. We draw a second, we're like, ah, you're the first, you know, runner-up, unfortunately, you're probably not gonna be in it.
You're the first loser. Does that need to be written in the policy?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, we're, you know, this, the policy says that they have the first option to buy, so, you know, in that drawing. And so we're, we're pulling the second option.
Well, if we're allowing somebody to send in checks, and that, if the check isn't good, if it bounces, now he could have another first rate.
Yeah, that's why we have a second, yeah, yeah.
And, and not, it'd save you a lot of problems.
That's probably more of a practice than, yeah, the policy, but yeah. We could write it in, you're suggesting, I'll put it there, this is not a big deal.
You're the one that has to do the work.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And if, if it's written, then it's written, you know, now people question you.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts to write.
Yeah, it says, "Numbers will be drawn to establish who shall have first opportunity to purchase," you got that bottom line.
So on your, on your front page, it's written up, whenever I was reading. I just don't know if the other part's not there or whatever, but the very last sentence there, or next to the last, because it's county's very last, it says, "Who shall have first opportunity to..." And then where does that go to? What, what finishes that?
Oh, on your, on the...
To purchases that, to purchase, and that finishes that.
Yeah, to purchase, and on the last.
I can repeat over, if I answer my own question.
Yeah, I was looking at that, you know, I was like, oh, look at that. When you get these track changes ones, they always throw me off.
Couldn't you just simply put in there, "Numbers will be drawn to establish who shall have first, second, and third opportunity"? Something like that?
I, I'll certainly add something to that, first, second, third.
Well, if we're going to...
First, second, first option, second option.
If we're going to adopt it, we probably could put that writing in there. This, this is for us to approve today? You're writing that in there?
Yep, first, second, and third is, is fine, yeah. And again, I, I think the whole purpose behind allowing this option is, is, you know, we have, you know, the timing of it all. I mean, eight, eight-thirty in the morning, some people need to be at work, and they don't wanna be late. We, we had a number of, you know, local residents last, in, in September, that, that had submitted checks that weren't gonna be here, and they, their number was put in the bowl just as everybody else, and then we drew for them. A couple of them were successful. So I, I think that this just helps get these properties back on the tax bill sooner. It allows people with greater opportunity to not have to show up if, if it's not a big deal. We're doing it in a public setting, it's open and honest, there's nothing unfair about the process. It's, works good, and, you know, if people haven't bought it before, they're dropping the percentage, they really want it, they have opportunities to do so at the auction. First off, but then... they have opportunities to do so at the auction, first off, with that forty percent, for those that are dropping down fifty percent. So, and that's a two-year window. We push that, it's time to buy it, so.
I'm just reading the back. Didn't need to point out, it does have on here that we do not do the buyback. But we are going to consider case by case for certain things. Should it say anything there? Or should that just stay that way? That's one question above that, where we're going to allow checks to be sent in. So that says if more than one person wants to purchase same property as present. We probably should, if more than one person wants to purchase same property, they don't have to be present. That makes sense, I like you.
Hang on. I didn't give you guys the wrong copy.
I'm looking to redline one back page.
I'm leaving it too, but it says, or submitted a request to purchase property.
I thought I'd thrown the word either. So, my copy's showing either present, at, or, has submitted.
Present.
Which is back to the back.
Or has submitted a request to purchase property. The only thing I would change in there is what we did above. It says, numbers will be drawn to establish who shall have first opportunity to purchase.
I gotta read the red, the red part too.
Yeah, no, that's second, third. So, you know, so both of those cases, I'll, I'll put, have first, second, and third opportunity to purchase.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the baseline, we have discretion putting owner under extreme circumstances.
Yeah.
I'd like to keep that.
And that's more of a legal issue than it is really a policy, always allowing it.
Just looking at some of the examples that Washington County has, there's a few that pop out there. Situations that we would want to consider.
Yeah.
So, are you ready to make a motion to change it?
Yep. That was a motion. Now seconded, yep.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the land sale policy as presented with the changes that were discussed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the land use, are the land sale policy with changes? Any other discussion? Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff Wiltsey, motion carries. The policy takes effect immediately. Correct? Okay.
Kessel.
As soon as the changes are made.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as the changes are made. Help me post to the website.
Hey, let me, Jake, I just got a note that you got a ten o'clock appointment. You're on for a department update. You probably can't do that at five minutes.
I probably could. I got to. Well, James, James, just to turn you understand that I'm doing my most of my updates today. And it's an interview panel for the vacant position upstairs in the district attorney's office right now.
Okay, well, if you can get it done in five minutes.
Yeah, no. So, Darwin, so. Appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be here, gentlemen, from this side. Department update, we'll start with the juvenile department. Actually, I'll just start with the department overall. Couldn't be more pleased with our staff. We've really, the staff have really come together and they lean on each other for assistance. We need a male to help take anyway. Sky comes over up north. If Sky needs assistance with something and you need female, we have a lot of female staff on the adult side. So they're, they're really working together and it's the little things that matter. Those little tease things of taking urine samples, helping, helping someone out, do something else when you're work坊stepping up. My staff aren't shy of, they ask. They're, they're, they're yes people. They do help out. So I couldn't be more happier, more proud of my staff and what we're having now. We're, we're a solid team.
Very good.
We do have a new hire coming on board, fortunately. Either one of you were available the day that Zach was here. We did meet Mr. Commissioner Kessler. He started February seventeen. Zach's been coming on Wednesday. Just kind of sitting his day off, so he's going to sit in and kind of see what we do and how our office visits are structured. On what Zach kind of bringing him over just tomorrow to.
I won't leave, I won't leave here with James.
We'll, we'll catch you when you're over here. He's going to be a great addition. He's coachable, he's teachable, he's presentable, and we're excited to have him on board. He comes with great reviews from super pens deep around. He comes from Warner Creek. He's got ties here to the community and then his spouse works at Child Welfare here in town. Don't see him leaving, see him sticking around. We're excited to have him on board. With that said, on the juvenile side, things are holding steady in the juvenile department. We just wrapped up a pretty significant case in the juvenile department. It was a sex crime that occurred up in Northlake. And we wrapped it up and came to a wonderful conclusion. The youth is going to be seeking some treatment in Jackson County in a therapeutic home. So he's going to be living with a foster parent. And it was a great all-around teamwork by the defense attorney, Jeff Hedlund, as well as Child Welfare, Charlie Tracy. And then Lake County Sheriff's Office, definitely tough work. We all worked together on the case and came to a great resolution. He was in detention for a period of time. We got him a house, living with grandparents, apparently. He told us it's accepted into the home with you this week or further next week, and being both with treatment as well. Patty Barnhart has indicated she's planning on retiring effective October first, so of this year. That's going to be some big shoes to fill, because Patty does a wonderful job and does a lot for our office and for the communities countywide. So, my hope is to fill their position and get someone on board that can work with Patty and Mayor Patty. So one, Patty can see if this person can make a fit for her position. And two, introduce her to the schools and how she works with the schools. Because I'm, I'm formed to that, because Patty does so much in the community and the schools with our kids that aren't on supervision. I think it's important we have a little community period there to, so it's a seamless overlap.
So, when are you talking, how much time to work with?
Two months. So there's, so they catch part of the summer, which would be August, and then the first month of school is September. So I was hoping to, we'll talk more about that come budget session. I'd like to talk to you about that. We've had talks about it in the past. Just wanted to update you on some things. Sky was our newest probation after just finished up his first year. He also finished up, he had some schooling left to finish up when he accepted the position. He worked full-time and was a full-time student online and graduated in June, in January, in December. His degree from Oregon State University.
And his degree was in what?
Anthropology. His anthropology, and it's not, what I think of anthropology, it's social anthropology. So it has a lot more to it than what I think it is. We're excited to have Sky. He's excited to be here to purchase in our home and in the community. So it's exciting to have some young folks come to town and stay. He's still working on some training, getting some training under his belt. Otherwise, he's going along very well. I'm real happy for Sky and proud to be able to work with him as well. Pam, June wrapped up her thirty-third year here with the county. And she has no plans to retire anytime soon, and she enjoys the job and we enjoy having Pam around. She's a lot of knowledge, not only in the juvenile department, but also with the family who work there. She has history, unfortunately, but it's helped us out tremendously. So that's kind of a wrap up on juvenile. You guys have any questions for me as far as the juvenile department goes?
No, I appreciate you coming in and giving us an update.
And on the adult side, Connie officially retired February first. She has a medical appointment today, this evening. Her health is coming along. So we hope there's nothing to be recovered for Connie. She intends to come back and work a couple hours a day, a couple days a week to assist us in working with Zach. Not so much on the paperwork, because we can teach him the paperwork. It's working with the clients and the clients' individual needs. I spent the last month trying to get this all down and I'm still trying to figure out each client's needs. Connie has a history, long history of these clients. So it'd be, it'd be great to have her on board to help that transition. Again, Zach starts on the seventeenth. Rachel Frederick is now certified by the Department of Public Safety standing in training. She received her certificate about a week and a half ago. So that's exciting to have her certified. That opens some more doors for her in that she can, there's more duties that she can do that she wasn't able to do being uncertified. Lily continues to be Lily, Jack of all trades. She's a workhorse and I appreciate Lily more and more every day. She's been a huge help when Connie's been out. And I've been trying to juggle the juvenile and adult and Connie's caseload, Lily's been a huge help. Doing a lot of things for me that I wouldn't, that otherwise wouldn't be able to get down. Our wood program is still going strong. Delivering firewood, we partnered with Warner Creek. And they have access to some of the Collins, two Collins companies. And they, they've been splitting it and delivering it. Right now, we have a holding because our holding party and I have an incubator building, they're scheming fold. But with the recent rain, it's also getting wet. So we reached out to the fairgrounds. So there's a bay of the fairgrounds, but we have some wood kept and I thought it was just a little bit. About twenty quart of wood, so not the fairgrounds that we're pulling from right now, delivering. So, last week, we took a big load up to Northlake, stacked it up. And in a couple weeks, we're just planning on taking another big load back up there so we don't create a north end. We've also reached out to Paisley and we're working Paisley delivering firewood. And there's a couple elderly folks in Paisley that aren't able to grab their wood from their garage or their woodshed and bring it to their front porch so it's readily accessible. So when we're in town doing community service work, we stop by and bring firewood out to, and stack it up for them so it's readily accessible for our little folks in Paisley. We're going to be in Paisley next week, working on some fire hydrants, digging some holes, helping see if Paisley gets some stuff done. And our plan is once Surprise Valley disconnects the power to the old siren behind Homestead, we're going to be, we'll be removing the power for them. They'll plan on their plans to relocate it or do something different with the siren. And then we'll, we have some work to do, some burning and some work to do once we get some, more than some other. So we're reaching out to.
So, I have to stop you, Jake, and ask, your meeting that you had up there, went, attended one of the city council meetings. It sounds like this, because you made a really good presentation on available services. It sounds like this is kind of a spin-off of that.
Absolutely. So they were excited about it and the phone rang the next, the next business day. And it was at Mavilla Grom, who works for the town of Paisley, and so you had projects lined up.
Yeah, city of Paisley.
City of Paisley, yes. City of Paisley, and projects lined up for us. So we're attacking us as soon as we possibly can.
Did they tell you about the wood holding area that's located up on Mel Street, at Sixty-Five Mel Street?
They did. They said they planned what theirs, we can take it anytime we need to.
Okay.
Transition housing. I spoke briefly with a couple of reconditioners about, and, Darwin, about transition housing. Lake County, we have an issue of not having transition housing from prison to the community. So currently, about three hundred and fifty dollars gets over clients a week, seven days at a hotel. On average, it takes three to four weeks before someone can get a job, secure employment, get their first paycheck, and get it in place, or continue to pay for their own hotel. So we're spending upwards of a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars on someone in a hotel. And working with, and speaking with Plymouth County, Keke Parker Rose, they chief. I approached our planning director and as, as always, my lady's on commission. And asked about the possibility of a house that the county takes back, a home the county takes back if we, community corrections, community justice, can do some renovation to that and keep the house within the county, on the county, on the county side. And we pay rent for that house to house our transition folks. What that does is it, it does take the house off the tax rolls, but it increases the tax revenue, or the county's revenue, because we're paying a monthly, we're paying monthly rent. So, instead of paying three hundred and fifty dollars a week for someone living in a hotel, we're paying three hundred and fifty dollars a month for someone to live in a house. And we can have up to three or four people, and after utilities are paid, add to that twelve hundred bucks, thirteen hundred bucks, the rest of that money comes back to the county. So it's, it generates some revenue a month, eighty hundred bucks maybe, unless we can, if, and we're, I'm working with the planning director, Mr. Johnson, and well, my lady.
I'm still not, and I appreciate you reporting, and I'm still not fully versed on all that and what the number of people that we have come through and transitioned and all that. But continue to work on it, Jake, and when you get to where the, what the output on it really will mean. And as far as taxation, if we, if we own properties and if they're rented out or leased out, taxation does come in.
Taxation does come in.
Yeah, but there's also income coming in as well, because we have to pay somebody for somebody to do that.
Well, the taxation part, not to go in depth on that right now, is important, I think, to all of us because of the taxing districts, not just the county general fund, but the taxing districts.
Sure.
Apart from the financial aspect, having a place for people who have served the time, if you may gesture, it's easier on them psychologically to call it a place.
And it's just not for those folks getting loose from the institution. It's also for those folks that are placed on supervision of these folks. They just need, they just need that opportunity, they need that chance of, for lack of a better word, three hots and a cot at home. Move over their head so they're clean, they can, they can eat, and they can get up and work. The more presentable you are, the greater chance you have of it.
Not to rush you, but it's seven minutes after ten in the mission.
Just about wrapping up, Jake. So there's more to come on that. Our budget, we never, adult visit, we never hear about that. So usually, May first to June, unfortunately. So it's, I keep asking about the budget. I don't like to hurry up and wait, but I can totally just kind of hurry up and wait. So I just tend to wait it out and see what the legislature, legislature chooses to do, can correct this year.
Well, the governor's budget's out, so that gives you a glimpse of what, what it.
Governor's budget gave us thumbs up and it was.
Could, could be, but for our budgets in time, it's going to be your best guess. I mean, it's going to be when the legislature ends, what it's going to be. But you got to take with what the governor's budget is and what last year's budget was and be conservative. Give it your best bet and go from there.
And that's what, that's what I've done my last couple of years, so. And then, Criminal Justice Commission and the reinvestment grant that Lake County received last fall. We are now preparing to start our Lake County Treatment Court. Our first session is scheduled for February twenty-seventh, like this month. Yeah, I mean, Friday, the judge will be here. And what that is, is it's going to be an intense, an intense probation, it's going to be intensive supervision probation, where they, those folks will come back and see the judge every two weeks. We'll have staffing, so at the table, we have county, my staff, the district attorney, the judge. And then we have a latest citizen in the community that's going to be on the staffing community as well. So we can see what they're doing and come up with recommendations on how to feather supervise these folks and need to treat, intense treatment, more UAs, more frequent contacts, than most currently have with our current population. The idea behind this is to reduce our prison operation, to reduce prison sentences. Give them opportunity to be successful in the community, as opposed to being unsuccessful after prison. But there will still be a prison sentencing over their head, so we're not taking anything away from them. We're giving them another opportunity, that's accessible for them, shouldn't worry. It doesn't increase crime, it doesn't inflate our recidivism rate, change anything near the community. It's not, been nothing but positive in the community, so that just happens. Arne County, they have a treatment court. Matilla County, I don't think they have a treatment court. And they, they were wonderful in those communities, so we're hoping to mirror their successes actually better than they have.
And I guess one of the burning questions is, for us to be able to order or arm around and support this is, who gets treatment, who doesn't, who determines who's going to have this intense treatment? Is that through the courts and through the judge and the district attorney? Is that through the courts and through the judge and the district attorney?
It starts with the district attorney.
But who gets the intense?
It starts with the district attorney. They'll be part of this during negotiations and they have to meet on our risk level. We have three different risk levels. We have low risk, medium risk and high risk. Folks in Treatment Court need to be meeting the high risk and the district attorney will have access to that risk assessment and all of this is an early pension, an eight digit number, hit and it'll pop up that individual's risk score. From there, he works the negotiations with the new district attorney and then at the time of sentencing, the judge imposes, then the government will state a plea, which would be in Treatment Court, attorney in Treatment Court. And then they'll be evaluated through, for treatment, through the treatment process. And the part of the treatment process, increased contacts, increased urine samples, just increased supervision, more than a quarter of two weeks. And they'll, the client themselves will be able to explain to the judge what they're doing, what they're not doing and why.
And if they fail, they have whatever the sentence is hanging over their head. Is it one strike, you're out, is it three strikes, you're out, but, but what will trigger for them to go to the next?
I think getting kicked out of the program, getting kicked out of Treatment Court, what's your, the sentence being imposed.
And that's determined by the district attorney.
There'll be baby steps, I mean, whichever they follow, they're all accountable. But this will be also a good time for the judge to also reward folks for their good behavior, for doing good things. There'll be some rewards from five dollar subway cards, ten dollars Safeway card, maybe a lost card for five bucks.
I'm asking these questions because other two commissioners probably aren't as versed as I am and I haven't reported on this in any public media.
So, yeah, there'll be baby steps, there'll be sanctions. We can offer some sanctions, a range of community service where they sit in court all day and watch other folks be sentenced to know how serious their crime, whether they break a god, a couple days in jail. They'll need to be removed from the program and the, the negotiating centers and those, which could be great. So we've got some exciting things starting now in the world. Thank you for saving, you're knowledgeable, so that's, any questions?
Before you think of questions, Jake on our interview panel.
I would just like to say thank you for getting on the agenda and coming giving us an update, talking about your staff, employees, your county employees, what's going on in our department. Appreciate it.
I appreciate that much, man. It'd be easy for me to take a lot of credit for all this, but I, this isn't all me, this is all my staff. My staff, we're doing wonderful work, which allows me to bribe.
Well, since you have to leave, very update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Darlin'.
All right, it's thirteen minutes after ten. We're going to recess until twenty minutes after ten.
Thanks Darwin.
No problem.
Poor Darwin.
If you want our attention, work it out.
Twenty-one minutes after ten, and our next item is Department of State, Planning Director Darwin Johnson.
Thank you.
Welcome, Darwin.
During the break, I put on your, in front of you, the schedule for the model code. Model code to, which is to bring the no ordinance into compliance with state statute. We are one of four counties kind of spread across the state that have been approved to go through the full update with Angelo Planning Group. They have drafted this little schedule of events that will happen between now and the adoption date. First, first of all, we'd like to schedule a work session, a joint work session between yourselves and the Planning Commission. I need to do with Denise about the time, but for the March seventeenth, and I'm hoping to do just the afternoon, which would be prior to a regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. That would just be kind of introduce the whole project and the first draft of the model code as it stands now, and then we'll make revisions as we go through this process. After that, then there would be a final draft to the county that they hope to have to us by April eighth. We've then sent out a notice to DLCD, which has to be thirty-five days prior to the first evidentiary hearing. Materials will be prepared for the Planning Commission hearing for May, and then on May nineteenth, we'd have our first evidentiary hearing before the Planning Commission with a follow-up meeting, two weeks later if needed. And then, following the Planning Commission's recommendation to the board, we will, you know, projected dates at this time would be June seventeen for the first hearing before you, and if needed, we could go for a July first hearing date, and that would be your final adoption, and that would go on from there to DLCD for a notice of adoption to them, and then, because this is taking the state minimums, there should be no opportunity for an appeal. There are non-discretionary, or there's discretionary items that are being discussed for potential inclusion into the model code. It's always been my intent not to include things that aren't required by state statute and aren't clearly defined with case law or at least statute or administrative rule. Therefore, there should be no opportunity for appeal. Those details are still getting worked out between the consulting group, Angelo, and DLCD. So, soon as, soon as I do a little bit of homework on my end, I will finish up just having our information sent to them on the ways in which we want the code to read, meaning specifically which types of uses are reviewed at which level. So, there's ministerial things, there are outright permitted uses, they require no review, no hearing, and then there would be things that are done ministerial, or administratively, sorry, that, you know, would be a planning director approval, those are what being looked at as a type-two decision, type-one was a ministerial, and then a type-three, which would go before the Planning Commission. Type-four is stuff that kind of legislative changes to our documents, and then would require a board hearing, so that's kind of the type-four. Kind of left out of this process, we've got current ordinance in place, own ordinance in place that addresses those issues. Because this is such an overhaul of our, of our exclusive farm use zones, our A-one and A-two zones, and then also our four-shoe zone, it's going to require that the rest of our ordinance gets really revamped and kind of readjusted a little bit, not the wording, but just kind of how things are processed, so the procedures would be updated for probably each other, other zones as well, even though nothing, you know, no uses were changed in those zones. That's kind of where we're at on that. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, going back to the seventeenth, Darwin, the joint meeting, I have about four hours planned for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, I mean, it may take a lot less, but...
But it's going to be pretty intense work in between the commissioners and the Planning Commission, and I'm taking that to be an overview of the whole...
Yeah, it'll be more in-depth overview than the five minutes I shared with you on...
Because we're not planners.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, so what we'll do is I'll get you copies of the draft as it stands now, and then just show you kind of, you know, our current ordinance and where we're going, how there's major changes, but, you know, we're not trying to become more restrictive, we're trying to give people more options for their land, and, you know, those options come with process, so...
So, our ordinance is going to have to change some verbiage, you said, in it, so will the hearing process be also for our ordinance and the model code, because the ordinance can only be changed through hearing process?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd have to ask Leader Council for sure, but, so...
Yeah, any, any changes is going to require a hearing, and the code that they're going to present to us just addresses those issues, those two resource zones. However, you know, our code has all the neo-commercial, industrial, all these other areas that will need to re-reference, it's more of a re-referencing activity that will happen.
So, I'm just thinking for processes, the board will be doing two separate hearings on the same date, one for our ordinance and one for the model code?
Well, the model code is the ordinance, so it's all, it's all wrapped into one package.
All one, okay, all right.
Yeah, sorry. Model code is a term that they're using, just because it's, we're trying to get, you know, you know, one ordinance that fits for, for the resource zoning, for things that are, you know, have to be, which are state law, that have to be...
I'll only be running one hearing, I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's model code, there's lots to it, and we'll get there, so... We still have the one vacancy on the Planning Commission, I, I need to advertise for that again this month, I, we need to get that filled so that we can have a full Planning Commission, so we can, we can make sure that we're getting, you know, enough participation and representation from the county on that. After, and probably during a little bit, you know, this is a crash, crash course in, you know, the zoning ordinance for everybody, I think, I mean, I think we're all going to learn a lot from this process, I'm going to probably have to run, you know, starting over, because there's so much, so much that's involved, on the state side of things that haven't been applied directly to the county for a long time, so, I'm looking very forward to this, especially because of, you know, if it's a model code, then other counties are a resource to look to for examples in how they approve things. And like I've said with this before, is that there are going to be staff reports and applications that are all streamlined as well, so that we can, you know, change a letterhead, you've got a commission application ready, go for use, maybe you've never permitted before, so, but that is allowed by state statute, so... We've got the road naming and property vacation hearing coming up on the eighteenth.
I'm pleased to go ahead, and I have questions on that after I talk with your owners for today, and I haven't talked to you at all about the updated...
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, the update is, you know, we'll have a couple, we have specifically three roads that need to be named, but there's an area between Lost Forest and pretty much south of Christians Valley Highway going east of Fossil Lake Road, there's a lot of pinfields, platted areas that have through right-ofways for road access, all along section, section lines and even quarter section lines and stuff like that, so, as we, as we have that hearing, I'll give more details on, on all of that, but it's, it's kind of a road naming exercise that needs to be done to really clarify, you know, how, which roads are public, not public, you know, maintained, but at least, you know, open to the public, and how we will, we will, you know, have a naming scheme for those so that we can kind of be uniform in our approach to road naming.
My question's pretty simple, how do we pay for it?
So, they, you know, currently, and I'm not changing our ordinance at all, so when the third house gets there, roads get named, so really, I think what would happen is that we'll already know what we want to name it, but we'll have the formal process still play out like it would before, but we'll just say we've already got predetermined what we want to name this, but now you need to pay for the sign and the process to make it happen.
So, I asked Darwin yesterday a similar question, just to be sure we weren't looking at road naming and road signing and the county doing it.
It's not, we're not going to, not putting up signs on all these thirty-something roads that need to be eventually named, we will only do it once, the third house, you know, even maybe second house or something, but that would be up to the person wanting official name at that time. It kind of makes no sense to have to change people's addresses, so it'd be nice, maybe it'll even be the first person, because once, once we know that someone's coming off a road that needs getting done, so...
Just for discussion, I'll throw my public hat on, is it's, county, you've already named it, you didn't pay for the sign, I don't get the option to name it or anything, how come, how come I'm paying for it?
Sure, and we'll have, that's a great comment, and it's...
It's a discussion that we will have whenever the third house gets there.
Yeah, and Rick, it needs to be more involved in that discussion, because right now, currently they're paying their employees to go out and install them as well, so...
But our policy now is third house, then it gets named, it goes through a hearing process and all that, so if we're going to do the hearing process now and name all of them, it's going against what our policy sort of does now, which if I was on the other side, I'd say, "County, you've already done a hearing, you've already named them, get my sign up," so, just food for thought.
Yeah, it's great thought, and good comments, and I, you know, I think when we get Rick involved, you know, because currently, you know, the road signs are road signs, and they ought to be paid by the public.
The only thing the road department has to do is, they do a service for us to put the signs up, they're public roads, road department has nothing to do with this, they'd rather be out of it.
Right.
And so, it's not a Rick or road bosses discussion, they do a service for us whenever there's somebody who pays for that service, and so, it's the public ways, not county roads, so think this out, probably ways of what the commissioners, whoever's sat here when that third house gets there, and the discussion's going to be in what our policy is now. So, just, just to concern that way, Darwin, and we haven't got a chance to talk offline, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I have some of the same, when it's predetermined, it kind of did a little, buy up a little bit.
Well, we just don't want to put signs out there right now if there's nobody coming off of the road, because it's going to get stolen, knocking down, whatever.
We know exactly what's going to happen.
And it might be years, twenty years or more until we actually get somebody that needs to be addressed off that, so, I do, you know, a lot of this kind of stuff when it comes to addressing as well, since I'm in charge of addressing, I'll predetermine someone's address for them, but they don't get the address assigned until they actually come in and apply for building permits. So, it's, you know, I do the exercise to get it ready to go and keep a folder on what the address will be eventually, because, you know, we've got a certain numbering system on, on addresses, so same, same kind of idea as where I was trying to go with this, that we, we have the roads ready to go so that we have a...
We're trying to think, Darwin, that would make it more efficient if the names were predetermined, if our policy was written, that the names are there, but as a third resident, you will pay for the signage, as long as that policy is sitting there, correct? Because we have had the other side of it, had two people, and they both wanted it named after their family or whatever, so there's a positive to the predetermined, as long as our policy will cover them, not make it absolute that the cost is what we hear when it comes time to let that sign up, so, talking about both sides, yes.
Yeah, let's get a little more up to speed on that.
Yeah.
So, land sale, a couple weeks back, I gave you guys a packet of all the properties that the county has, I just got the new tax lot overlay from Land County, they maintain our data, and so I'm just double-checking that against this and making sure we have all the properties that we, that we own, and I'm hoping to present to you guys, possibly even on the eighteenth as well, the, this year's list of properties that we got dedicated to us in October from the tax foreclosure list, those who, who didn't pay the taxes, obviously, we got the judgment on those properties, they've been dedicated to us, and we will have to have you guys make an order to sell those at the June hearing. The list that I gave you, though, is a lot of the properties that were pulled from various taxing years, sales, and so they remain on the, on the county's books as, as properties that we own, that, you know, maybe, in some cases, there's been a pretty clear path on why we're keeping them, but other ones, there isn't, maybe there was great detail, so we'll, we'll, I'll be looking to you guys for clarification on how we want to proceed with these, and I hope to, you know, if it needs to be a work session or what, you can get through this list and...
Darwin and I sat down, we started to go over those individually, and it became quite apparent that it was going to take hours.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
And so, that's whenever he gave it out, told each one of us to go over, and Darwin and I have not been able to go over it.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But that, that's a good start.
And I'm going over it too, because when we first did it was, you know, it's been a few months, and, you know, since I don't look at it each day, you know, I need to clarify it for myself, you know, either one, we haven't sold it yet, or two, you know...
You get to overlay onto our computer.
Yeah, and then I will, I will, I'm renaming those on, you know, just on the overlay, it's not official, but I'm renaming them so you'll have an idea of, you know, are they currently on the tax rolls, you know, as properties that are up for sale, you know, specifically what is it, and, you know, if it was a tax foreclosure property, what my opinion that they should be on, you know, it should be pretty clear when we go through these, and it shouldn't take too long, so we'll be organized, we'll be able to just run right down the list and, you know, knock out more than half of them right away, because they're already on the sale list, and then another big chunk, because there's no reason why we shouldn't sell them, then we'll have property discussion on when, maybe it's the time that we just decide to sell this, because we can't figure out why to keep it anymore, so, but we'll go through that, and we'll hope to, hope to then have a, you know, a clearer path forward on, you know, our approach with properties that I know, you know, like stuff up on Heart Mountain, that, that has great deal of value, you know, to the other agencies, you know, Official Wildlife, I know there's, there's a lot of properties in St. Grouse Habitat that, you know, we kind of took the approach last couple of years, but we probably hold off on selling those at this time until we can get a ruling back. So, I, you know, I look forward to making this, you know, you know, something that someone can walk in and understand exactly to themselves, but why we're keeping, why we're keeping them, there's no, I don't know.
On Heart Mountain, just received several boxes of information by those that have been retained for many years.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just finally, I mean, we're just end of the year, in December, and we had fifty-one land use applications, similar to the actual, same number that we had in two thousand thirteen, so, which was the most I'd had in food and air, so, we're still pretty busy, and all the other things that we do are the same.
So, I have a question for you. Going back to the vacancy that you have on the Planning Commission, have you had a chance to work with Jay on the discussion we had with our representative from CIS on getting them here to do a presentation for the Planning Commission relative to, I don't want to use the word liability or responsibilities, and at the same time with Mr. Bailey again on...
I haven't at this time, I, you know, I, I hope to be able to accomplish that during this, this process, this model code thing, because it, you know, to not beat them up on, I mean, just specific to that, but then to, to have other issues brought up as well as, you know, what is a complete rule, and then, you know, how do we apply all this stuff that we talked about now? Yeah, I hope to, maybe even on, on that seventeenth, I'll talk to Jay about that day and Jay Bailey as well.
Okay, we've got a great opportunity with CIS.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was very obvious.
Good.
Also, back to the model code and the calendar of March seventeen, I've got two other things already slated on that day, so I may have to work with you separately.
Was that during spring break?
No, it was spring, like, a week after, actually, so we, we...
Might have, I don't know, Planning Commission or somebody that has kids or whatever, sometimes spring break really changes people's eligibility.
Well, I'll be letting everybody know, I mean, as possible, and then the Planning Commission, like you guys, will give us a schedule, this is tentative, you know, at this moment, but to keep to this, we'll have our goal accomplished by having been adopted for sure before August, so that's, you know, having this end in June, it looks like, or the first day of July, gives us a little bit of flexibility if we need to have a hearing tomorrow.
At this time, I'm open on the seventeenth, unless something changes. You have any other updates from the Department?
I think that's...
We ought to give a real quick one on the properties that we just had cleaned up, maybe?
Yeah, so Jake did bring up, you know, he's had a discussion with me on, you know, getting one of the properties that the county's foreclosed on that we've been, you know, it's been a long process getting, for one of the people evicted out of the properties who weren't, you know, not supposed to be living there, but also getting it cleaned up, so that cleanup has happened, now Jake and I will continue having discussions and including liaisons about the possible transfer to turn to the most recent home, which is a duplex and a home, all-in-one tax lot, to becoming potentially that transitional housing, whatever you can call it.
Well, you know, but just been conceptual while I've had the discussion with Jake, and not even been even close to being decided.
Yeah, it's just been conceptual to me at this point.
Yeah, I am, I guess with this, and with the neighbors there, I think there, we've let know that we're fully expecting to sell that piece of property, I, we may end up with some controversy if that becomes transition, transition from the past history.
Yeah, that definitely, you know, about, and flash, you may have to, to join the neighbors who now appreciate the, the use, but then at the same time, you know, if it gets to become rentals again, we may end up in the same situation, so, or worse, really, because then we're getting watched, so... So, so that's the discussion, it's, we had, Center Street Riders is, I think is the name of the company, the car wash, the folks who own the car wash, they actually did it clean up, and it turned out really, really well for the county and gave, you know, a welcome company to business.
So, it's not slated to be sold right away, you're holding it until Jake?
So, yeah, Jake and I need to hurry, have a discussion, get that done.
That's news to me.
Yeah, and so, but on the eighteenth, so not the eighteenth, yeah, on the eighteenth when I, when we do our other hearings, I hope to have the land sale list accomplished, hopefully you guys will take a chance to review some of those properties, and then I hope to have, you know, this last year's list of the order to sell those, but also an additional order to sell prior year's properties, and this is one that we've had since, I think, oh eight, and we're struggling with it a lot of times. And if, hopefully by then, we'll have a determination of Jake who wants from the fore, if we want to continue to hold off on selling that one, or if we want to just put on an option right away, because there's, there's going to be a number...
I'm just sitting here wondering what went sideways, because it was going to be sold within like four to six weeks, we worked exceptionally hard to get it picked up, and so, it's sort of a surprise to be honest.
Yeah, so, and I think why I didn't, didn't get right on that one is, obviously with Jake, we need to get all those ducks in a row and figure out what we're doing there, but I, I didn't want to leave all these other lots untouched as well, because if, I know a few of them also have homes on them, you know, whether it's manufactured homes or not, and I want to kind of throw a whole bunch all at once, not do a bunch individually until we get to June.
Okay, so that, that helps me, Darwin, now, I will push up, looking into land sale, I was under the impression that we were going to get some of these back on the tax rolls right away, you're waiting until the next official land sale before you can put it in?
Yeah, but we can wait till, you know, we can wait like the ones for this year in just some long June, but there's going to be a bunch that we find on the list that, that are homes that, just like the one we just cleaned up, that we ought to try and get rid of a lot sooner, whether Jake or someone else ends up becoming the person...
So, we're going to just have the one land sale, we're not doing a special land sale?
No, I think we still will do a special land sale, sorry, but we have to advertise it for four weeks, and that's why, you know, I, I don't want to have to do multiple advertising. I, I know we're already going to do the one for the June, but that won't happen until four weeks, you know, four consecutive weeks prior to the June sale, but we have to have, again, four weeks before any other property we sell, I just want to put a bunch all at once, so that when we do, drop the percentage down to forty and drop it to fifteen, I don't have like, okay, in the four, two weeks, so, we're going to do this here. We're getting there, and it's going to be much better.
Thank you very much, thank Rick.
Sorry, we'll be there.
Going down our list, we have, Darwin, you, no, I don't, does Darwin need to stay for the St. Grouse, pardon?
I'll stay.
What's your thoughts?
Well...
Our next item is the St. Grouse Rural Making Committee appointment, Ken, you brought this forward, it's been, we've been working on the St. Grouse thing on with Darwin for quite some time, Harney County's appointing a person to represent on the committee, am I right? Give me a little review on it.
Basically, on the SageCon scenario, the LCDC is looking at adjusting some of the rules on how a land use in St. Grouse Habitat is handled, more along the line of guiding development as opposed to hopefully not impeding, and to make those changes, they have a resource advisory committee that, you know, developed some recommendations to the state, and the committee usually is seven or eight sort of folks, but the state wants each county to have a rap on it. I was kind of thinking along the line of Darwin being appointed, one or the other county wants to have more elected officials on, so that's kind of a mission, so, that would almost double, you think? So, I haven't had a chance to talk to Darwin, I'll have either him or I, but somebody from Lake County needs to be on the resource advisory committee.
Okay, but, but...
The rules advisory committee.
Rules advisory committee, okay, and all thirty-six counties or just eastern?
No, St. Grouse counties.
St. Grouse counties, okay.
Just, just the seven counties, but then also with, with that committee that the governor's tasked the LCDC to set up, they're also going to involve a bunch of the other nature folks, and so, on the Nature Conservancy, you know, a thousand, I mean, there's just going to be a bunch of different groups that are on the, on the advisory committee as well, so that's why it's growing out, you know...
Expertise, and the Nature Conservancy actually have a lot of respect, they're going to make the balance, some of the other ones, I think they need to have some representation to maintain the balance.
So, so with, the two of you have been working on the Sagegrass the most and Darwin has been involved quite a bit. For us on a rulemaking committee, if it gets too political, that's too many commissioners, they get bogged down sometimes. And I'm not saying not to employ you, but what, what do you think, Dave, what would help get along to the end result? Sounds like it's going to be a committee that so many people could be involved in the result then.
I think that the state would push it along. That's an emphasis. So, I don't think it'll necessarily get bogged down. But I think there's a need for a strong representation. To protect our interests. So, I kind of.
Which one of you want to be on the committee and I'll appoint you with the support of the other commissioner?
I'm going to be involved no matter what on this, but if it's, if it's like Ken's saying, if it's, it's having more teeth at the table, you know, politically, and that's what at least one other county judge is asking for, I think that, you know, you guys work together best with the.
Well, they're not closing meetings, so.
I mean, the planners, planners are going to continue to be doing a lot of the lit work behind the scenes.
Yeah, my first impetus was to appoint Darwin. But we're going to be drawing, well, my planners anyway, as research. And I don't really want another thing, but we need to have county commissioner on.
So, I'll move to appoint Commissioner Kestner to the Sagegrass Rule Making Committee.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
If it goes past five thirty, we get to serve dinner at these meetings, Sagegrass.
If, if, if you want, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, Ken, you're officially appointed to that committee. I don't know what it takes to notify them, to these will probably.
Yeah, I'll have done on data, beginning with that recommendation to the committee.
Yeah, it'd be a recommendation to appoint, but L C D C may slice and dice a little bit and choose.
Okay. So, moving on, on down our agenda, I believe I've got all the additions and the releases. Move down to Lee's on updates. Who wants to take on whatever famous liaison updates first? No?
No. I, I, I'll give a quick update. At one o'clock today, I'll be meeting with our legal counsel and going over potential long-term enterprise zone agreement, working with Jeff Mannernack from Red Rock Oil Diesel. And I will also be meeting with the town like few managerations and the legal counselors for looking at the verging within that. So, that'll be an individual meeting, not a public meeting. I'll be working on that continuing to take quite a bit. As I've mentioned last time, to bring the community service fee, vergage forward, we delayed that for a couple more weeks. Land use, things that's going on, and Jeff Mannernack was fine with that. So, I've been talking there since back in November, I believe, and getting that before us. But it just seems to continue to grow some things that we have to work on. Working on that. Last meeting, I believe, I let you guys know that I will be going before the O T C in Salem on the nineteenth of February. They're asking for the act chairs to be there to be able to discuss quite a few different things, but primarily probably the step in those things. The week of, let me find it here.
Are you going to be gone on the eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Or just the nineteenth?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be gone in the afternoon. I'll, I won't travel until, because meetings not until early morning on Thursdays. I'll travel. I'll be here for, that's a regular board meeting. We got hearings and everything. Will the two of you be here on the eighteenth?
I'm down on the medical.
You're down?
I'm in medical.
Okay. Are you here? Okay, so I will be gone that afternoon, as we said. Director Abrams from Department of State Lands after the closures of Crown Heart and Goose Lake. And as a board, we opposed those closures as an individual. I, I've worked quite hard with the representative, state representatives for Lake County Unicenters. That closure was lifted, that emergency closure was lifted on the thirty-first. Director Abrams will be getting here and want to try to take some opportunity to meet us on the week of the twenty-third of March. Or tentative. Oh, February, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong figure. Tentatively, she would like to, if you guys are available, to talk with each one of us, I believe, individually on the twenty-sixth of February. Are you guys available on that day? That's a Thursday. She's going to be here before that. She wants to, she wants me to do a tour with her of the lakes. We, we can arrange if you're, if you, while you're not here on Thursday, we'll try to make it.
I might have early afternoon.
Early afternoon. I'll try to work, naturally working with the director, you're working through her staff people to give a schedule. So, just to make you guys aware, that's, that's week she should be here. That Monday, she won't be here until late Monday night, early Tuesday morning. I'm, I'm actually have an appointment on that Monday, the twenty-third, so I won't be here, but she won't be here until Tuesday.
As you mentioned, anything about any O A R rulemaking?
Not at this point, no. I'm, I'm trying not to engage too far in that way. I'm keeping it more on public access, not cultural sites and those things, although it still goes back to talking about.
As I've always stated in my, I understand why they closed it. I don't appreciate the method per se, but I want to go against any future rules that we address those.
I, I agree with you, Ken. I'm sort of anxiously waiting to find out what she, she likes to do. Other than that, I think that's probably a pretty good update on my, at this point.
Just really quickly, I'm meeting with Amanda Warner Thorpe this afternoon at one, going to talk a little bit about the forest roads. Have a conference call, three, I have two of them. I'll figure out which one I can cancel once with University Oregon on that interview. All of us were contacted on, the other one was on the, this conference call on the airport, future paving project. Then next Monday, I'll be in Salem at the A O C Legislative Board Meeting over there. S C O Ed, S C O Act for all of us on the thirteenth. And then I'll be attending the O S U meeting, O S U sponsored meeting, it's around the line on the seventeenth. I'll be back that night. So, I'll be here for the meeting on the eighteenth.
Give a little update, the MODA, M O D A Health Grant that was offered as far as to submit, if I cannot, we submitted one for Northern Lake County and one for Southern Lake. They went with the two aspects of the Southern Lake, that's a commercial kitchen for the Innovation Learning Center, of which it hasn't been solidified yet, follow-up discussions. And also on the physical activity coordinator, that's kind of like continuation of the chip program. As far as the North Lake project, that was, the North Lake Health District submitted to us, me, a project for a community recreation center. And that really would serve Northern Lake County quite well, except the price tag is up there and it didn't get accepted, capital improvement. But us to be working with the, to facilitate Ginger and I to what options to, to make, to fulfill that. These are the community recreation center. Wednesday, tomorrow, I'll be in Ben, had an industrial option economic meeting. So, I won't be here tomorrow session with most of you guys.
We're scheduled.
Oh, I can't, yeah, excellent.
We have to.
That's why we made the decision, good. Some other health, human services conference calls on Friday. Next Wednesday, I've been working with the North Lake, you know, when the forest came on, we used to take turns just sitting in to maintain communication with the North Lake neighbor. But then they shifted their meeting days to contact ours.
Well, then I got to vote it in on the board. That changed the thing too, and then that changed them.
I've been talking with them to get their, their schedules back to open so that periodically we can drop in, you know, for maintaining communication.
Absolutely. Are they meeting at the community center or?
Yeah, there's a big next Tuesday. They'll drop in on the parks and rec. They had a proposal also for a trail on this motor grant, but we already had a trail. So, I'll be talking, mostly just giving them some advice where they can go and make, maybe get some grants on that money. On next Friday, the thirteenth, S C O Act, S C O Ed. I received a phone call yesterday from the Department Office of the US Fish and Wildlife Service requesting that I can, a ceremony of the governor and secretary in care on a C C A A's signed. That's candidate conservation agreement with assurances. The Harney County kind of led a process on that and Lake County and several other counties have chomped in on that process. Being name only invite, told me, but I talked to S C O Ed and hopefully they have a forum.
Well, if Dan and I are there, there would, there will be our, our fulfillment.
Yeah, she was looking for a total membership forum, but Pam said that she would work on that. I get that.
And what is it that you're signing?
Uh, not signing. It's a ceremony. The secretary of major, your good friend Sally, and I. And the governor, going to have a ceremony to kind of sign off on all the C C A A's. That's candidate conservation agreement with assurance for private ranchers who have performance. We have Sagegrass Habitat. It's an inner agreement with the US Fish and Wildlife Service before the species is listed, if it is listed, that would protect them if the species become listed. Let's say you have four acres of Sagegrass, Sagegrass. And you're in an agreement that you would maintain that Sagegrass. You might do some harm here and there, but it's an official agreement that would permit you to do certain things. If you don't have that agreement with Fish and Wildlife Service and the species is listed and you go out and plow under some Sagegrass habitat, you can be every fine. So, it's a way that to maintain Sagegrass habitat within reason with private owners without them being punished. It's, it's a big move in keeping the species off the list.
Is that it?
No, a couple of other things. I was told you with the idea of that forest restoration, same thing Commissioner Sound. I haven't decided totally on that yet.
Commissioner, if you do, can you let me out? Because I won't do it because we've got a meeting on that day.
One of you has to be here. And you already told me that you wouldn't be here.
But if you decide you need to go, I will.
I'm not, I'm interested in what the forest restoration, because my forest service background, we did a lot of restoration.
Well, we've got to have a forum here because I have hearings slated for that day. Unless you guys want me to run hearings and vote and do it all with us.
No, let's flip a coin. We'll get back to you, Denise. One of us will go and one of us will remain. I just, and you probably go.
Yeah, it's the same group that Ben involved with, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, if you've been a father, that group, go for it. My truck is getting too many miles on it anyway. That's it.
That's it. All right, we will adjourn at five minutes after eleven.